All right, we'll call the meeting to order. And we're going to begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silent meditation and salute to God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to sit as a licensing board? So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Campground license renewals tonight. First one up is Frontier Camper Park, Scott Thompson.
I'm not Scott.
No, you're not. I kind of figured that. Oh, your name?
Dorothy.
Dorothy. Okay. We want to do these one by one?
I think so.
Okay. We usually do.
I have one question.
Me too on this one.
Something I didn't see was usually, didn't we used to get the number of campsites, safari sites?
Yes, they did.
Wouldn't that list come? Didn't we used to get that?
It is on there.
They're on separate pages.
225 campsite in Florida.
On the first page.
On the first page.
Right here at the, on the agenda. Oh, yeah, I see what you, the number happens to be licensed for 225.
Okay, I was looking for it in the application thing. Didn't even see it. Thank you.
Barbara?
On this, do we still have pass due tax on Frontier Camper Park?
They ordered a couple of paid-ups that you see this evening that was most important.
Tax collector of Whispering Pines. Nothing special. No, I saw that, but the only one that tax collector was for Whispering Pines, which
is also, was pass due tax. It doesn't say, it doesn't say Frontier Camper.
Were you making a motion?
I see something about Frontier, but it's a, does it say about the taxes being paid?
Make it mo, and, and.
Right.
No, it's, it read as, as of 12/29 it was passed.
Okay. I think I did see that.
So I don't know if the taxes have been paid yet?
They're not in our account.
Okay, pass, so the tax is due. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, let's see, well, we can always, you know. Do you want me to make a motion for each?
Make it.
And you could do it, yes, subject to all state. It's way down the line. Motion to grant renewal to Frontier Camper Park, subject to all state and town regulations being met, and all town taxes current prior to issue. Is this?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on Frontier Camper Park? Okay. Uh, council, any more questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, okay. Did you vote?
Yes, I was an aye.
All right, I just didn't hear you. Next up is Greenwood Hill Campground Association. Uh, it's in Hope Valley. Representative? Yes.
Hi, Richard Denaut, D-E-N-A-U-T.
Okay. Uh, council, do you have any questions? Is there anyone from the public that wants to offer any comments on Green, Greenwood Hill Campgrounds? Okay.
Motion to grant renewal to Greenwood Hill Campground Association, subject to all state and town regulations being met, and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up, Holly Tree Campground. Representative?
Trizzo.
Okay. Which is Ashway Road, Ashway. Uh, council, does anyone have any questions? Anyone from the public have anything to comment on Holly Tree Campgrounds? Okay.
Motion to grant renewal to Holly Tree Campgrounds, subject to all state and town regulations being met, and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, Whispering Pines Campground. Representative here tonight? Oh, there you are. Clint.
Yeah, we usually see Mr. Whitman. He usually comes for you.
Nice to see you tonight.
Nice to see you.
Uh, council, do you have any questions? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on Whispering Pine? Okay, council?
Motion to grant renewal to Whispering Pines Campground, subject to all state and town regulations being met, and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next up, application for a new camping area license, and this is for a hearing for the Ashway Pines, um, which is also, and Clint Ramsden is here tonight. Mr. Nakarado?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Solicitor was going to make a comment before we started.
If you just wouldn't mind, I want to try and help put what's before you in context for you tonight. We don't get too many of these on an initial, um, application, so I just wanted to kind of help focus everybody if I could. This application that's before you tonight has been, um, in process for quite a long time. The Ashway Pines Campground sort of began back in probably 2006, or maybe even a little before, because we didn't become solicitors until 2007, so I'm not sure exactly when it started. But since that time, it's been before your planning board as a major land use development, and it was before the planning board on at least all occasions. The planning board unanimously approved it. In approving it, they had to make two critical findings. One was that it was in accordance with the town's comprehensive plan, and the other, that it would not adversely impact the surrounding properties. It also has been before the zoning board on three occasions. It's been there for an aquifer protection permit, and it was, there were two, two occasions that it was before the zoning board for that. It was before the zoning board for a special use permit, and it was before the zoning board on five occasions for that, and then that was amended, and it was back before them for two occasions on that. Um, all of the zoning board votes were unanimous to approve this. The case also has been before the Superior Court twice, once concerning a boundary dispute, with the court ultimately concluding that Ashway Pines had title, clear title to, um, the, I'll call it the disputed laneway. And then on an appeal from the zoning board decision granting a special use permit, which was resolved in the town's favor. So what you've got before you has had a very long history, and it's been hard fought by everyone involved in it. The reason why I wanted to bring that to your attention is because I want everyone to understand, including people sitting in the audience, that you are not tonight reviewing those decisions. You're not reviewing the planning board decision, you're not empowered to overturn the planning board decision, not reviewing the zoning board decisions, you're not empowered to overturn those. What you're doing tonight is you're sitting as purely as a licensing board. The ordinance that governs what you're doing here tonight, 9-71, has very specific requirements in terms of what the applicant has to meet, and if the applicant meets those requirements, they get the license. Your discretion is very limited, and trying to rehash everything that occurred between the planning board and the zoning board is not going to get us anywhere tonight, because you don't have authority to deal with that anyway. So, um, having said that, I just hope it helps everybody focus on, you know, what really is at issue tonight, and that's whether or not the specific items listed in your ordinance have been complied with, and whether or not the license should issue because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, did anyone have any questions? Okay. Mr. Nakarado?
Okay, thank you, and, uh, thank the solicitor for her very concise summary of what has been a, a very, very long process. I think it did start actually before Patricia's firm became solicitors to the town. I think I was a heck of a lot younger and probably had a heck of a lot more hair. But we are here tonight after receiving unanimous approvals from all your boards. The standard of review for the issuance of the license is governed by section 9.74 of the ordinance, uh, and DePreet engineers have been our engineers on this project from the outset, and Mr. Prevee, uh, who was, who is now the project engineer, Mr. Duhamel was previously, um, has submitted a written statement to you dated, uh, July 29th, when we started in on the, uh, on the licensing, uh, process. Uh, Mr. Duhamel is on his way here as, as well, but, uh, I think I can, I can summarize for you, uh, the, the standards and our, our responses, as outlined by DePreet engineer and that correspondence. The first, the first criteria is the camping area must have at least 20 acres. This site, which is, assesses plat four lot seven and seven C, contains almost 75 acres. It's 74.5 acres, so it's much larger than the, than the minimum required by the ordinance. The facilities or campsites on the proposed camping area shall be located within 200 feet of any property not owned or leased by the applicant or any public highway. In fact, this project has a natural vegetated buffer of 200 feet in which no facilities and no camps, campsites will be located. That's, we're in compliance with that as well. No individual campsite within the camping area shall be less than 1,500 square feet in area. In fact, all of our camp, all of our units, all of our sites, of which there are 260, are more than 1,500 square feet. This was, just to so you understand, that this was designed to meet these standards in the licensing ordinance, because those are the actual only standards that are in the town of Hoptington for campground. So when it was designed by DePreet, it was designed with these standards in mind. Number four, at least 10% of the total campground area shall be set aside for common recreational facilities for occupants of the camping area. In this case, approximately 45, almost 46 acres of land will be preserved for passive recreation, and additional three quarters of an acre will be used for the pavilion, recreation, and pool area. This is a total area of approximately 46.72 acres of recreational area, which is 62.7% of the total site area. And lastly, the camping area shall be separated from view from adjacent property not included in the camping area, and from the public highways, either by natural screening or by stockade fence. The camp area is separated from view from the adjacent property by, by the proposed 200-foot vegetated buffer, which is greater than most camp areas. In fact, we have a landscape architect who has a landscape plan that accompanies the final approval. The final approval granted by the, by the planning board was actually in the summer of last year, and that has not been appealed. So, uh, I hope that Mr. Duhamel was here, but Mr. Ramsden here, and we would be open to answer any questions that you may have. But this, this is a process that has been vetted, as Ms. Buckley has indicated, for, actually for, for many years, and we're told, we have never received a negative vote on anything in the process. So, and we are in fully compliance with the standards that are set forth in your ordinance.
Thank you. Why don't we start at that end and work our way around? Frank, do you want to start with anything?
I just had a quick question. When is it all going to get up and running, I guess, is that?
Actually, uh, we would like to be, I think, Mr. Ramsden would like to have everything ready for the, for the, for the summer, if possible. If possible.
That's pretty quick.
Lisa?
In close with the applicant's, um, submitted was full-size, many-page mats. They were, they were, I could not produce them down, but you don't have anything? Do you want me to bring them up?
Uh, if it would, if it would be helpful, sure, yeah. I, that's what I, that Chris was bringing one with an easel, but since he's not here, I'm sure we'd display those.
Frank?
I'm also, thanks.
Okay, Barbara?
Um, I'm on the same page as Frank. When are you starting? Not when would you like to be finished? When are you starting?
We are, uh.
We're not having a blizzard yet.
We plan to be open for 2013.
All right, so you're trying to be open for 2013. When do you think you're going to try to put shovel to the ground? We don't have a blizzard?
We are, we are moving. We are moving some dirt around per instructions of the town of Hoptington, especially we're allowed to parade only. We're just waiting for our approvals to get started.
And then you'll be able to start, you think, this spring?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, why don't we hold for a minute and let them get settled, and then we'll begin.
Oh, God, I would guess not. Lisa?
Just for your identification here, this is a pump over the site. This is the, what we used to call District Number Six Road, coming from, uh, uh.
In East Wal-Mart.
Towards, uh, the Brackford area. Route 216. This is 90, this, this becomes 91. It's the intersection of 91 and 216. The axa is from a lane, so-called laneway, which is labeled "Bruno Place." It's a panhandle-shaped site. All vegetation around here, all vegetated here. Heavy vegetation, you really can't see much from, from the road. That's our, that's our ingress and egress camp sites in the middle here, which I think is second. Has been totaled to death. And they're, they're on the campsites. And this is the, this is the dedicated buffer.
New, uh, septic system, state-of-the-art denitrification system, all approved. Public well, all approved.
Um, actually, my question too is, Mr. Ramsden, I know, I went to a lot of these meetings, so I'm quite aware of a lot of this. Um, you have a, like, not like a gravel pit, but like a little lake in there? How are you going to be, you said you were going to be developing that? It's somewhere where the activity center is?
Yes, ma'am.
What are you going to do with the water? The little lake, the?
It's going to be a feature. It's going to be, that is a full quarry hole, and, uh, we've been told by the engineers that it's going to be holding water for a long, long time. So we're using that as a, the landscape architect is using that as an accent piece on the property.
Thank you.
Anything else, Barbara? No, I just wanted to make sure you had it down and rid of it. Um, I've got a question for whoever. Maybe I'll turn it to you, but we'll see. I've got, I'm going to ask the question, and we'll see. The section 974, the standards to govern the issuance, uh, issuance of licenses, those standards, um, some of these things, I mean, it's going to take time, they're in the process of, of, of developing the site. When, or I assume the zoning official pays a visit to determine that these are all met? Is that something he does routinely, or?
I don't think he does that kind of visitation routinely. I think we're trying to move him to a place where he does those kinds of visitations.
Okay.
Um, but, um, does somebody go out and check this stuff?
Well, actually, I guess I should.
Bill would be able to.
Bill would know.
Bill would handle that. Make sure that that's something, because I don't know how often he goes out, or, but, but that's something that you would oversee. Okay. There was a, um, the Department of Health letter that was sent down, um, on the la, this was, this was dated, there's a Department of Health letter dated November 30th, 2010, and it, the last, um, I guess you have that?
Yes.
You would have that handy?
Yeah.
The last, um, paragraph, "This approval is granted only with regard to the rules and regulations pertaining to public drinking water." So my question to you was going to be, um, the section where it's, um, 973, Procedure for Applying for the License. There is one section in here, number three, where it says, um, you need a certificate that the State Department of Health, from the State Department of Health, that the camping area meets state requirements. What other requirements are there, other than the water? Were there other?
There, um, we have a DEM permit on the alteration of a freshwater, wetland, uh, which was, which is a significant, which was a finding of no significant alter, disturbance.
Well, what I'm referring to is, now, I know there are ordinance, some of them are old, and I don't know when this got established, but the, what this states is certificate of the State Department of Health, that, so, we're looking, so I'm asking, what else does the Department of Health have to give you, other than in reference to the well? Was there something else the Department of Health was going to do?
I don't, I don't know of any other permission from this. Department of Health approved our, our public well, our public water supply, and that, that's the extent of what I know.
Okay.
We're not running, yeah, I don't, we're not running a restaurant or, or anything like that. We have a little convenience store, but, but that's it. I don't think there's any other requirement.
Unless you're serving food.
And then not serving, not serving any food, no.
Okay, I just didn't know if there were, there was something else. Okay. The, I guess those are the, those are the main two questions. Tom?
Um, I see you have 260 sites.
Yes.
Are any of them safari sites?
Safari sites?
Safari sites, are they all?
I think.
No.
No, no safari sites? Okay, screw that. Um, the only other question.
I'll clarify about that. Any site that you use is a safari site, but it, my, my definition of safari site would be like your open area, where people can gather around all these sites. It could be safari use, but they're not safari sites.
Okay, I know what you're saying. I guess the other question I have.
Could you, um, explain exactly what is a safari site?
I would look for this safari site as someplace like an open field, where you pitch a tent. That's it. That's what you'd go and pitch a tent. Am I right? I mean, I'm pretty much?
Yeah, that's correct. This is an upscale RV operation, but tax will not be allowed. And the, you can usually take a safari site and put it like in a big open field, whatever you do with it.
Okay. And the only other question I had, and Lisa, maybe you can answer this, has to do with the ordinance, not with the application. Um, we collected a hundred dollar fee for this, and we have to pay for the advertising out of that, and all the letters to the abutting. Does that cover that?
No, probably not even close.
Okay, so we need to look at that.
Yeah. Plus, there's, um, council action on October 6th, 2003, where they also increased the fee for a campground license itself from $50, you know, remotely to a dollar per site.
Yep.
So at some point, that dollar per site.
Ends up.
Will have to come in at some point too.
I'm more concerned right now is looking at that hundred dollars and what it costs the town to advertise and notify the abutters. I want to make sure that.
I noticed the abutters, it was only by regular mail, it wasn't.
Yeah, I noticed that.
It was certified mail this time.
But I know the advertising is very expensive.
Yeah.
Okay. Could you get that together from the permit? Thanks. That's all I have.
Scott, do you have anything?
No, but I do, I do have one question, and it might not be relevant. I did notice in the, uh, report of the fire association that, that they saw no problem with any fire apparatus if there was a fire. With, is, is there, would there be any need to use any other entrance or access to the campground, other than the one that the fire trucks would use? I mean, the public guard, or anything like that? Is there any, any other?
There is no other, there is no other means of ingress and egress to the site. It's strictly through Bruno Place.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, sir. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this subject? Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
Yes, just state your name for the record.
My name is Mike, my name is Gary, over 229 Ashway Road. I'm a budding, uh, budding neighbor, I guess I'd call him. We've, uh, we've pretty much banged this off the last three or four years. You know, I've heard from every expert, seen every map, you know, and, um, you know, to be honest with you, at first I was not in favor, and I am still kind of in favor a little bit. If it's going to bring revenue into the town, all in favor of it. But just like anything, until you get your hands on it, or it's in your pocket, don't believe until you see it. Okay? My big concern is back in the flood of 2010, my house was dramatically underwater. I had 58 inches of water in my, in my house, my house flooded. And some of the things with it, talking about wetland alterations, they were talking about putting tubes, bigger tubes, through, through, letting more water through. My thing is, if you have water flow on this side increased, and you don't increase it on this side, there's only one place that can go. We've already seen what happens when there's just two tubes there. My question is, who is going to be responsible if my house floods? Is that something the town's going to be liable for, or is it going to be something from Mr. Ramsden?
Um, well, that's something that we're, you're talking about the future, and we don't know what's going to happen.
I understand that, but I would like an answer. Is this something the town is going to take on?
Uh, I don't think there's anything that's going to happen.
No, we don't do that. I mean, it's sort of act of God. If you put the pipes in and they go. However, if there is a, if there is runoff, where the planning board has established that none is to be, then your appeal is through the planning board.
I think.
But it, but it's not, it's not something we can handle.
I'm not, I'm not going to settle for an act of God. That's ridiculous. Yeah. The thing of it is, is if this gentleman goes ahead and opens up these tubes, and my house gets flooded, one of my kids, bodily damage, death, house gets flooded, you know, it's all put out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the issue? Yes, sir.
Where did she say that?
Um, I think he's Mr. Gary.
And Pansera, uh, 30 Pansera Lane. I spoke a couple of times, more.
Wait, wait, excuse me. Just a minute. Um, one person at a time. I couldn't hear him with you two talking, so. I'm sorry, Mr. Pansera, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Could you start ahead? I mean, start right at the beginning again?
Yeah. I don't know if it's been brought to your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you a second time. There you go. I want to make sure you heard.
It's more comfortable the other way.
Thank you.
But that's okay. Uh, I don't know if it's been brought to the attention of the council or not, but, uh, there is a problem with the boundaries and the survey that's been presented to us and the public and the, and the zoning and planning board, in that it's, uh, it's not complete. Uh, we've been to DEM, and they have ordered a new survey. So at the present time, the original survey is not accurate and not complete. And I want that, bring that to your attention, that no decision should be made at this time because of that fact, that the survey is not accurate and not complete, and proof of that is that they've been in there now, that is, the state, DEM, have hired a surveyor to come in and re-survey the entire, our entire property and the boundaries that goes with the, uh, with the trailer park.
Who's paying for that?
Who's paying for that? The DEM is paying for it.
DEM is paying for that?
The DEM is doing it, yes.
When do they think that boundary information will be available? How soon?
We asked them the same question, when you're done, finished?
Right.
Uh, January 31st is the question, the answer that we asked to that question.
Okay.
That's, that's, yes.
Mr. Pansera, what was wrong with the initial survey?
It was incorrect, and there were, there were discrepancies on it that the DEM did not like, and they, and it was never, the, our western boundary was never really surveyed properly by the surveyors that did it the first time.
But why is DEM doing it?
Because they want to get it right, and we want to get it right.
Well, I know, but they usually don't just do things gratis.
Because they want to make it right.
Well, I.
Because we went to them, told them it was wrong, and they investigated it, and they said, yes, you're right, it is, it isn't, it isn't correct, and so we're going to order a new survey.
Okay.
And they're paid for.
Anything else?
I've got a lot of stuff, but I wanted to bring this to your attention.
All right, I've got it down.
I'll put it on.
Okay, Mr. Nakarado. Anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to be heard tonight? Yes, sir. He will, he will. Not in sequence? Not yet.
Robert Taylor, 34 Tomacaw Road. This, I was at that property last weekend, overlooking the clear cutting that they've done, and I see no way that this year. And I see no way that this year they can take and open a campground, upper class campground, without having sewerage in, which during the cold weather, they don't wanna put sewerage in. And there's no water lines in, they gotta dig for that. Power lines, they've gotta drill for poles, they can do that during the winter. But there's so many discrepancies in what I've been hearing from two different people here. You can't possibly get it done in that short a time. And I've seen the equipment, and I know they're working down there, they're working like hell down there, trying to get everything done. But it's, it's, I've seen projects go, and I, they're not gonna be able to do it. And man says 213, maybe yes. I would hold off on any licensing until it's seen that it's feasible. Other than that, they're gonna have a license, free hand to pull anything in there, anytime, anyplace. It's like, I have, I build a high, a house, I, before I can move in, I have to have it checked, and I have to have a certificate of occupancy. And until it's done, that house can't, is gonna be built, you just can't have a foundation there and get that. Uh, same holds true as far as I can see with this, this licensing. And as far as what the solicitor was saying, that it sounds to me just exactly what the federal government got thrown at their, in their face a couple of years ago, that either sign it next by Monday, or the world's gonna come to an end. And I don't believe in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask her a question?
Yes, Counselor, if I may.
Well, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Uh, can I ask Mr. Panzera Senior a question?
Um, no.
Okay, I can't, okay. The thing that concerns me is I, taking in the testimony that I have just heard, uh, I understand the DEM, at least according to Mr. Panzera's account, uh, the DEM ordered a new survey, and I don't know who the contact person was that told him that, and also whether or not he was contacted by letter, and also to what extent. That should involve this council's decision, because usually if there's a concern with the state agencies, as far as, uh, this property, then how should the council proceed? Should we proceed subject to DEM approval, or should we, this being cleared, or should we?
Well, I can make a suggestion of the ordinance, for instance, that's before us tonight. One thing we can do, if we make a, if we grant the license, they're not gonna open tomorrow, they're not ready to open. Um, however, what we can do is if the license is granted, you could make it subject to adhering to this ordinance completely. Um, if, if something's going on with some outside, um, whether it's state, if beyond our town, as you look on our agenda, you can also make it subject to all state and town regulations, and you can specifically note this particular article, so that they'd have to adhere. No matter what we're here tonight, and we don't know who said what, or whether something's gotta be redone, you make it subject to something you've covered yourself, you've covered the town, so that's something that can happen.
Yeah, but usually.
971.
I believe they have all of their approvals in place.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever the survey issue is, I'm sure Mr. Nakarado has something to say about that.
Sure, I'm sure he does.
I don't believe it's got any relationship to the approvals that have already been granted for this. So, you know, whether there's a survey issue out there that needs to be resolved in order to, um, put the issue fed in terms of what the Panzera's own, what somebody else owns, I don't know. But what I do know, and I'm sure Mr. Nakarado will correct me if I'm speaking wrongly, they have all of their approvals in place from all of the agencies they need, and this is the final piece for them. They can't start to build up there until they have this license, so it's not a situation where they can go ahead and build all this stuff and wait and get licensed later. Our building official will not give them the okay. I think you heard Mr. Ramsden say that the only thing he told them they could do was grade, grading, I believe, until they've got their licenses in place. So they can't do any work at all until they get this license, and they've got all of the approvals that they need in place. I don't know what this issue is with the survey, I'm sure Mr. Nakarado can tell us, but it, it doesn't relate to their approvals for this project.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of times with surveys, they would have a situation, they assume that it's not a concern because it dement, it couldn't impact the dimensions of any piece of land.
Right, well, for instance, one of the court cases that involved this piece of land was the laneway, was the boundary for the laneway. That went to Superior Court, and that was, that's obviously a critical piece, because if the laneway couldn't be properly used for access, ingress and egress, then that was a big problem. That was resolved by the court, who said.
Is that Panzera Lane, or is that boon o' place, or what?
Boone o' place.
The, the boon o' place. So that, I think, you know, that's a good example of something that would impact on this. But whatever the survey is that's being talked about, it doesn't relate to the approvals that have been granted to this project, because they've already been granted, they're in place.
What happens if the council approves it, and there's a problem with the survey afterwards?
Well, we don't, we're talking about this survey without knowing anything about it. Mr. Nakarado?
Yes.
Can you address that, please?
Well, that's, that's the first I've heard of it, this evening is the first I've heard of another survey, but the solicitor's absolutely correct. The subject, the title to the laneway was subject matter of a lawsuit brought by the Panzeras against us, and it was successfully, it was resolved in, in our favor. So whatever he's doing with DEM and a survey, I mean, that's his business, doesn't impact us. We've got a, we've got a judicial determination that we own the laneway, and they don't. So, that's a debt, that, I mean, where do you have that in a case where you actually have a court case determining title? And now to have to throw up another red herring here that DEM is doing another survey? That's between him and DEM, doesn't involve us at all. Uh, that, that issue of the title to the laneway has been resolved by a judicial determination, not by somebody saying there's a survey in process. And that, that is, uh, that's a characterization to confuse you. I'm sure you're not confused by it, your solicitor's absolutely correct. Uh, we have, we have, we went to court, they brought us to court, they made a claim, they lost. So, we own the laneway.
I'd like to speak.
Yes.
My name's Christopher Panzera. I reside on Panzera Lane, Bradford, Rhode Island, 54 years old. My father is Kenneth Panzera, that's my brother, Kenneth Junior. I'd like to respond to Mr. Nakarado's characterization of his applicant owning the laneway. That is correct. He does own the laneway, per decision of the bound Superior Court. The language of the decision for the ownership of the lane referred to fill lines. Court Judge Thompson, Court Justice Thompson, indicated in the decision for adverse possession, not that the applicant owned the laneway by title, but he received it by adverse possession. And the parameters of that decision are very clear, and I suggest that the solicitor review the decision to determine exactly what the applicant owns. That, under my understanding, and my reading of that decision, is that the applicant owns from eastern fill line of the laneway to the western fill line. Now, that decision, ladies and gentlemen, was a very convoluted decision. It's very difficult to interpret, because on one hand, the judge says that she refused to indicate the western boundary of the lane. The applicant's engineer came forward recently with a survey that indicates that his client owns not only to the western fill line of the laneway, but further into the western terrain known as the isolated strip. The language "isolated strip" came from the survey that was approved in Superior Court during the court decision. That isolated strip also has a reference by the judge, where she indicates the owner of the isolated strip is not present before this court. The two individuals present before the court were Mr. Ramsden and my father. Mr. Ramsden's engineer, Mr. Duhamel, purports to use the isolated strip under a survey that he has submitted to this town, indicating that his client owns the isolated strip. Now, let us refer to the definition of ownership. What does ownership mean? Well, I'll tell you what ownership means under my understanding. It does not mean a Class 1 survey. A Class 1 survey can be used as a standard of ownership. But if we're talking about a legal proceeding, and I believe this is a legal proceeding, that's lawful, I believe that ownership indicates that we have to look a little further about what ownership means. My father responded to a 46-foot wide survey by this applicant that encroaches 20 feet eastward of that laneway into his swamp. Back in 2005, that survey was presented. He had no choice but to go to a lawyer and a surveyor to find out what exactly he owned. And he found out that Mr. Ramsden didn't have title ownership to that road, and he had to obtain it by adverse possession. But, let me get back to ownership. Ownership under the state of Rhode Island indicates title. What is title? Title means that a person has outright ownership, in that they have the ability to convey property, and they have the ability to prove that they own it, that they've purchased it. I do not see any evidence of titled ownership for the isolated strip of land. And I submit to this council that, under the requirement of this approval for this campground, it states evidence of ownership for the approval. In this particular reason, region, I say evidence and proof are synonymous. And proof of ownership in this state, in every state in this union, as far as I'm concerned, it's not a Class 1 survey, but it's a titled document. And I submit to this council, this evening, that this applicant with a major land development, with major impacts on this town and this community, provide a titled document. And until that titled document is provided, I submit that this application is suspended, should be suspended, until this applicant can provide a title deed to the property which, which I'm referring to is the isolated strip of land. Now, I'm not claiming my father owns that isolated strip in here, but what I am wanna state is this, this man did the work of this town, because back in 2005 and 2006, Mr. Diario said, if it's a title issue for the laneway, a third party will, it will be sent out to a third party. That's Mr. Diario. By the way, he also authored a book called, co-authored a book called Mastin on Real Property, that speaks of title ownership and what it entails. Might be good for everybody to look into that once in a while. But let's get back to what Mr. Diorio said. He said, title will be sent, if there's a title issue involved, and there was, it'll be sent out to a third party. Well, it wasn't sent out to a third party, no, it wasn't. That's the third party, Kenneth Panzera. He went and determined the title issue. Now, I say that this, you don't know Kenneth Panzera or anything, but I think what you might wanna consider is the amount of money, time, effort he went through to establish the evidence of ownership that was required for licensure, licensure. He did it. Now, all I'm asking here tonight is, what am I seeing? Well, I'm seeing the same thing I saw in 2005. I see an applicant that wants to use a piece of property, he's got no written conveyance. He's got no proof of ownership, there's no title. There's no title. Where's the title? That's all I wanna know. Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
The, um, the proof of ownership is in the court decision, but Judge Thompson said Ashway has titled to the laneway as a matter of law. That's established law. That's good enough, and there's no question about that.
Justice Spockly?
It was never appealed, I'm not a judge. Um, it was, it was never appealed, it's established, it's a, it's a legal truism. Ownership to that laneway has been legally determined.
The parameters of the laneway.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, ma'am.
I have to call you out of order. You've, you've had your say, and you can have more says, but one person at a time, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Um, anyone else like to be heard tonight? Yes, sir.
I'm Ken Panzera, I'm living on 90 Panzera Lane, I'm budding the RV Park, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. For my own welfare, I fear, I fear the RV Park will provide a very bad life for me in the future, so, and, uh, as well as my best interest in our property, for my family. But to respond to, uh, I'm not quite sure who the lady is in the back, what she just said about the laneway, um, she's, she's using the laneway as a reference, as a court document, yet what she's not expressing is that this laneway that was proposed after, there was a new design after the laneway court decision, after the laneway was established in Superior Court. A new survey was created after that survey was established in the Superior Court for the laneway by the applicant, and that new laneway, the road design, encroaches on the isolated strip. So in reality, uh, what she's saying about the, uh, the laneway in the Superior Court, and that it's okay because of that, what she's not saying is that, or real, maybe doesn't realize that, the new survey that was, uh, created after the Superior Court survey, uh, that survey encroaches on the isolated strip, and so that means that it is, uh, not the same as the Superior Court survey. So that, what she in fact said is not, uh, you know, the fact, because it doesn't, the new survey is not the same as the court survey as far as the, the boundaries are that were established in Superior Court, because the new survey, the boundaries encroach further outward from the Superior Court survey. Therefore, the new survey created by the applicant for the road design, in fact, is a larger, wider ownership, you know, above and beyond the Superior Court survey, so it's not the same. And so if you reviewed Superior Court survey, and you reviewed the, uh, the applicant's, uh, most recent survey for the road design and, and the property involved to create the road, the, uh, the property in the latest survey by the applicant for the road design uses more land than they were granted through the, uh, granting of the, the laneways through the Superior Court survey. So in fact, by describing the Superior Court survey as evidence and being sufficient, um, is not the same as a survey that was used to, uh, create the new road design, because that in fact encroaches on land that, uh, my, that, uh, my brother described as isolated remaining land, uh, that needs to, uh, be, uh, established as a, uh, you know, the land that the applicant indeed owns, uh, above and beyond the, the court survey's determination, uh, at this point. So, there's a difference between what she said about the, uh, court ser, uh, the court survey and the laneway and the, uh, current road design is a different survey altogether, if you understand what I'm saying. Does anybody understand what I'm trying to get at?
Mm-hmm.
Is, you know, what we, what she was saying, and the difference in the survey for the road design to. to this date is two different surveys, as far as the land determined that the court gave to the applicant during the Superior Court decision is different than the land that they say that they own for the most recent design of the roadway for the RV park.
Point taken.
Yeah. So in fact, the new survey that my father was referring to, being prepared by DEM and USDA, in fact, is to determine that, any problems that might occur from this conversation that we're having now and in the future, because somebody might come and say, "Well, you know, what's Mr. Ramsden doing over my land? That's my land." And if the town gives Mr. Ramsden a license to use that land, then in fact, you know, who's going to hear it from the person that comes forward and says, "That's my land. What are you doing?" I mean, who's that person going to talk to about that? I mean, that's a problem that could very well exist in the future until this third-party survey that my father was speaking of is actually revealed as a complete survey to determine at that point, you know, to bring forth more understanding and clarity to where we are here today, as far as the issue, you know, basically, the roadway and the entrance to the RV park, the 500-foot strip of land that the applicant was awarded as entrance in the Superior Court survey to determine, you know, the western side of the road, to more clarify that. Seems to be a lot of complicated confusion at this point. So basically, we got two surveys at this point, the Superior Court survey and the applicant's most recent survey for the road design, and they both differ. So, and I would just like to say that that's the way it is with the surveys and try and clarify any misunderstandings, as to my best knowledge. So I do have some other issues that I, you know, concerning the licensing procedure that I would like to be able to go over that concern me and, so I guess, you know, it says, "Hearing on issuance of a license," and then it says, "Proposed location of the camping area is found to be compatible with the character and land use of the surrounding neighborhood." Yet, this is not really, as far as I'm concerned, it really doesn't fit into the neighborhood because I live in an RFR-80 zone, and, you know, currently, the development rights have been sold on three major properties surrounding the RV park. And in fact, this RV park could very well be an intrusion on the, you know, well-being of the development rights of these people that sold the development rights and, you know.
Mr. Pancera, I wanted to, you brought up Section 975 in reference to the character of the land use. I want you to know that this did go before the planning board. And so it has been decided by the planning board that they, by unanimous decision, that they felt that it did fit with the character of the neighboring properties. I understand you can disagree with that, but that decision has been made.
Yeah.
I just want you, I think you know that.
Well, I know that, I read that stuff, and I don't necessarily agree with it, but I figure since that was before the licensing board here, that seeing as part of to get a license, I might bring it up and see what they had to, if I could voice my opinion and how I felt.
Of course.
Maybe, you know, that's just not it. You know, I feel strongly about it, you know, because the RV park resembles a bus depot or a Walmart parking lot, and, you know, it just doesn't fit into the farmlands that surround it, and, you know, we lived in peace all our lives, and this is a total intrusion on our well-being, and I don't know, you know, it could very well be a detrimental effect on our lives, and we may not even be able to live in our homes any longer, but somehow, some way, people come up with these thoughts and ideas and these reasonings to differ the way I am thinking and, which I don't agree with because I've lived there all my life, and I know that something like this, what it's capable of, whereas these other people don't live where I live or haven't lived where I've lived, and their opinions, I feel, are not truthful, which could very well go back to the planning board's opinions and their testimonies and, you know, and I know I had a chance to speak then, but, you know, some of the things might not necessarily been the way it should have come out, the way it should have came out. So, I mean, how does a commercial land use fit into properties that have been, that sold in development rights that surround the whole major land use that, you know, like I just described, looks like a Walmart parking lot or a bus depot? I mean, it just doesn't fit into the character and the surrounding neighborhood, and it creates noise, it has the potential to create noise that will probably cause illness to people and drive them crazy and drive them out of their homes, and it has the ability to create smoke. And then during the summertime, smoke lingers in the air and doesn't rise because the humidity holds it down, and that could disperse to the people in the area. This is like a one big factory with very many chimneys blowing smoke into it that doesn't rise, and no testing or no staging or have created staging tests or any evidential protection has been offered to the well-being of the people surrounding the RV park and of any record other than opinion or referring to another campground, you know, this campground. And we're talking about the campground that's going to be in my backyard, not the other campground and what they think. What should have been provided is expert testimony through testing and staging of noises and testing, and that was never provided. The smoke state issues, how much smoke was going to come out and where it would go and how bad it would be, has never been concluded in any expert professional manner to protect anyone other than opinion of somebody that supposedly knows all this stuff, and it's just totally, has to do with the character and the surrounding, you know, land use in the neighborhood and all these things that, you know, is part of the licensing, you know, of the council, all these things that I feel I need protection for, as far as evidence from expert testimony or somebody that, a professional that provides services to protect people from possible, you know, well, I don't know, possible, possibly being affected in an adverse way that would affect them to the point where they couldn't live in their own homes or enjoy their lives in peace of their property. I mean, we're not provided with anything like that in the past, and I'm very disappointed that anybody could possibly think that we will not be affected and that this RV park will fit in, and all this stuff is just absurd. I mean, it's just, I just can't get over the fact that people actually think that. I mean, alls I'm asking is that, you know, I mean, then people say, "Well, if there's a problem, there's a nuisance law." I mean, you know, where does a nuisance law apply to a commercial use or, you know, or major land use? Where's a nuisance law fit into something like that? I mean, I already know about the nuisance law and how that works and how difficult it is to get any type of acknowledgement other than having to go out and buy it, spend money on an attorney, and get your own experts, and spend thousands of dollars and get that, go to court, and, you know, that's how that works. And I got other concerns about the visual aspect of the, which is part of the licensing The camping area shall be separated from view from adjacent property, not included in the camping area, and from the public highways, either by natural screening or by a stockade-type fence. Where it refers to camping area from the public highways, if you drive by the beginning of the entrance to Vuno Place on Route 216, and you drive by that, and you look over towards the RV park, you can clearly see machinery working, and you can clearly see the whole place from the highway. And I don't think there's a tree or any kind of camouflage or fence that can be provided to cover that visual aspect. So what I'm saying is that if I can see machinery working out there from driving down Route 216, what could possibly stop any visual sighting of 260 campers up there? I just can't see anything that could prevent that because it's up on a hill. The 216 is low, and the campground is...
Mr. Pancera?
Yes.
I think your point's been made.
Yeah.
But they have to be allowed to do what they need to do to create this development.
I know.
Even if they work on the driveway or the lane, there are times that we're going to see equipment coming or going, et cetera. So it's, it sounds like it would be normal to see that now, and I understand that if you live there, perhaps it's unpleasant. It's obviously very unpleasant. But they've gone through the process, and here we are tonight talking about a license.
Yeah.
So I think it's understandable that you would see some activity now while they're in the process of developing it. But as time goes by, the zoning officer will keep an eye on it.
Yeah. Well, what happens if they get a license and they can clearly see everything from the highway and after they already go through all that? I mean, is this something that should be staged?
If that happened, then they'd be in violation of the ordinance. So that's a possibility, and if that occurred, the town would have to react. But that's not what we're doing tonight.
Right. Right. Okay. Well, I mean, it is part of the license. I mean, it clearly says right here, you know, that that's part of getting a license. I mean, that's why I'm here. So then it says, "No facilities or campsites on the proposed camping area shall be located within 200 feet of any property not owned or leased by the applicant or any public highway." Well, Mr. Nakarado said that there is no facilities within 200 feet today, tonight. Well, I can describe the staging area for the cistern and the fire protection is right smack in the middle of the 200-foot buffer. I can describe the building, the Vuno Place house, going to be used as part of the RV park, is right smack in the middle of the 200-foot buffer. I can say that the western side of the campground where the site is, about nine sites in a line on the western side, basically...
If any of those things were ended up being true, they would be in violation of the ordinance, and the town would have to respond.
Yeah, well, why didn't they?
Well, they're not in violation now. They haven't started the park yet. It hasn't opened. It hasn't opened.
Yeah.
The house has been there like 15 years. Right. So it has nothing to do with the park.
Well, that's kind of strange, because I just pointed out things before it opens that are already proposed to be there when it opens. I just don't understand that. That's why I'm here tonight. They're trying to get a license, and I'm already telling you things that...
Okay, well, your point's been made.
No matter what happens or what I say or anybody says, you know, other than approval for the RV park, it's like some foreign language. I just can't figure that out. Why do I even show up?
Would you like to hold for a minute? Barbara Palvo has a comment.
Just on two of the things you mentioned in the 200-foot buffer.
Yeah.
The house has been there for 15 or 16 years. I certainly am not in, I certainly don't want to tear a house down because it's inside a 200-foot buffer. That house has been there that they're using as a point. The staging area, when I remember from where they're doing the staging area, and you're right, there's probably a cistern in that, but that's where the fire department needs to have it. And if the fire department needs to have it, we have to do that. And then I'm assuming that they're going to cover it up. It's not something that's going to remain in sight. So even if it's in the 200-foot buffer, it may indeed disappear some, because I live in Ashaway, too. I live right on Bethel Village, right on the other side, so I know what you're talking about. And those, and also, my understanding is that a lot of the trees are staying. They're using dirt instead of pavement in a lot of the areas, so that it will become more natural. So I think the 200-foot buffer is going to be sustained, although some of it, while they're building, probably it can't be because we need it for health and safety. But also, the house is never going away. The house will just be the house. It has people living in it, it has a family. And I believe...
That's going to be used as a facility for the RV park.
No, I think that's going to be still a home.
I've been to the meetings beforehand, and it said it was going to be described, I mean, if there was a better description on the survey of the RV park and the plan, it was some things missing on there, and one of them's a gate for the entrance road is not on there. I mean, this entrance road, as far as I'm concerned, is not wide enough for the safety of people. If you look at it, 22 feet, and RVs aren't coming out by each other, one person won't be able to walk on the side of the RV park without getting ran over. I mean, anybody that would approve something like that, would think that was safe. I mean, I just can't believe it's come this far.
The fire department looked at that and the police...
The fire department only refers to the safety of fire and fire hazards, not to the safety of pedestrians, you know?
They're expected to move to the side, pedestrians. They're pedestrians. They're not a car. They're concerned about the RVs and the fire trucks passing.
All right. I've heard all this stuff before. Wait till somebody gets run over. It says right here, "A description of the facility is intended to be installed on the proposed mobile and manufactured home park, and the services to be available to the persons residing therein." I mean, that's very vague on the applicant's survey. I mean, there's things there that are missing, for instance, the parking for visitors. I mean, where do people park when they come in, when they're towed behind their trailers? Where they put their cars, you know? Is that going to be safe for the fire safety and all that? I mean, that's not on that survey. I mean, there's things like that. I mean, so I just thought these things need to be established a little better, and they're not, they're not really fitting in in order to get a license, and I just explained it, and I don't think I can make it any more clearer than that. So as far as the boundary is concerned, shall maintain appropriate boundary markers. We just described in clarity tonight about the boundaries, and anybody that would say that the boundaries are fine right now is making a mistake. And that's it for me tonight. I don't think I can get any further than that. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question, or even Lisa, she could probably answer? When the Superior Court makes a decision on ownership of a road or a property, is that automatically entered in the de-title book in the town?
No, it wouldn't happen automatically, but if there's something that impacts on title, then the attorney for whoever is prevailing would want that on record.
Okay. So can I ask Mr. Nakarado if that's been done?
Sure, but what relevance is it, Scott? You know, I mean, I don't know. He might not even know, since it didn't concern, I don't think, concern his client.
Is the question, has we recorded the...
Yes, the Superior question.
I don't believe it has been recorded. I don't believe that. It has not been appealed, has it?
An appeal is, how long for the appeal?
It's 30 days from the day of the issue.
Couple of years ago.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, one quick question.
Can you come up, please?
My name's Ken Taylor. I live 56 Tomahquod. Now, as far as, you're saying 200-foot buffer, it sounds really good. Well, I can see his excavators running, standing on my property, and he's saying that I'm not going to be able to see that, see campers. If I can see an excavator, if I can see power lines that are 1,000 feet away, I don't know how far they are away, quite a ways away, at the other side of his property, obviously I'm going to see campers. Now, is he going to put up a fence there? You're talking about a stockade fence? If you can still see the stuff, are you going to give him a...
Vegetated buffer.
Like trees, arboretums.
Oh, he's going to add more trees in there?
Yeah, because you're having it underneath.
Barbara? If we could, I'm sure the applicants would be better suited to answer that sort of question.
Well, no, I'm wondering if he doesn't do this...
If he doesn't, if he doesn't do anything, and he encroaches within the 200-foot boundary, I would expect that multiple residents are going to be out there with measuring tape. They're going to make sure that when this is completed, that it adheres to all of this. And if it doesn't, they pick up the phone and they call the zoning inspector.
But you're saying... But you're saying that I'm going to be able to, I'm not going to see the campers?
Oh, I don't know if you're going to be able to see something through the trees, but there'll be, there'll be a buffer.
Because it's not very much there.
But they can respond to what sort of buffer. Whenever you're ready, you could respond to that.
The 200-foot buffer, right now, obviously, the foliage is off the trees and the bushes and whatever. And I'm sure, there's no question on my mind, there's going to be a time in the wintertime that you'd be able to see through there. However, most of the time in the wintertime, there's nobody on that site. Per ordinance here, we can only operate six months of the year. So I don't think you're going to have that problem unless there's, and if there is, we would be the first to react to, to solve that problem for you. If it, if it requires a stockade fence and at your property line, we would. But at this point in time, I was out there today and I, I see there's some issues with the, with them right now, taking down the trees or whatever. But we're putting back, we're putting back 240 trees. So it's not over yet, you know? As they say, you don't, until that fat lady sings, it's not over. And I think that we, we expect that the landscaping and the layout as proposed will buffer your property. And if it isn't, you know, I, I only say to the, the members of the board, you know, I'm, I, I am available at all times to be contacted. No one in this room has ever contacted me and said, hey, let's work something out. And I think that the Panziero family knows that. I've tried to approach them many times. I mean, I'm hearing things that I, I could easily, other than taking your time, I could resolve these problems with a simple meeting. And I stand ready, willing, and able to be the best neighbor I can be.
I don't think you ever contacted me, though.
But I, you know what? I, I, you know, yeah, but you know, I don't know who you are, quite honestly, sir. I'd be, I'd be more than happy, I'd be more than happy to.
We, we, we shouldn't really have cross-talk. One person at a time off the microphone. Was there anything else you wanted to?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak? Mr. Nakarado, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, no, I, I really don't want to labor or anything. I think that we comply with the requirements and the ordinance. The only thing I can state is as far as the, the house that's been referred to, it's occupied by the gentleman in the green sweatshirt. He's, he's the caretaker. That's going to be caretaker facilities. I don't know if you consider that part of the campground, but the house is going to be the, the house is going to be the house. It's been there probably for 50, 50, 75 years. Not going to change at all. We think it's fortunate we've got somebody to live, to live on site, to supervise. And that, that's what, he lives there now and is going to continue to live there, so.
Okay. All right, counsel? Do you have any-
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to grant the license to Ashway Hines RV Resort, subject to all state and town regulations being met, all town fees paid, all town taxes current prior to issue, and Article III of Hopkinton's Code, the camping area followed to the letter.
Second.
Well done.
I just had one quick-
All right.
To Tom's, what about the fees? Do you want to add that to the motion?
That's why I did all-town fees.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No, my, my fee thing was something we had to change the ordinance.
Oh.
In the future.
We have to look at the ordinance fees. That's what that was.
Right. And I just added all-town fees, Tom.
Yep.
Because if there are the additional fees, actually, she had some points on the advertising.
Yep.
She's got it in there. Okay.
Any more discussion?
Yes. I've known the Panziero family for many years. This councilman, being on a town council is not always a fun job, although it's a great honor and responsibility. I'd say the last meeting and this meeting is kind of tough. And I also have an obligation as a councilman to try to be fair and also to appreciate what the law is, decisions of, of court decisions. I would hope that Mr. Ramsden will be a good neighbor. I will support voting for this license. I appreciate our solicitor's advice and I look forward to working with the community, whether it's the business community or individual citizens. That's what I have a responsibility as a councilman. But I'm satisfied that, at least from what I've heard, that that's the correct vote this councilman should make and I will vote that way.
Any other comments? Okay, I, what I'd like to do is, so make sure everybody hears what the motion is. Lisa, could you re-read it?
The motion was made by Councilor Capalvo and Secretary by Councilor Buck to grant the camping area license to Ashway Hines for the RV report, subject to all state and town rape relations being met, all town taxes current prior to issue, subject to Article III camping area, Capalvo and Buck.
I also added all-town fees. Because we have the new fees that we were doing. Yes, and all-town fees paid and the Article III camping area followed. Hopkinton Code, Article III camping area.
Okay. We're all set? All in favor?
Aye.
Was there anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that this has been a very difficult process for many of you and I appreciate your cooperation tonight. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn as the licensing board and reconvene as a council?
So moved.
So moved.
On behalf of the applicant, thank you, sir.
Good night. Good, good, you know to keep at it. Thank you. Good night. All, I thought we did that. We haven't done the all-in-favor part. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
What was it?
No, no, I didn't second. Two people moved it.
I saw moved, I saw moved. I've been telling them.
Yeah, the two of them did. I didn't. I was interested.
One or the other.
I think you both moved.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm sorry, but maybe you could move into that room or outside and talk because we really need to make this meeting go forward.
Quickly.
Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I'll do it something.
I went to poll December 15th, December 5th. Okay. Is there anything else to pull off of?
I don't know if I wish to.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of December 19th at February 21st, 2012 is the second town council meeting in February due to the President's Day holiday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The reason I pulled it, it's page two. Lisa?
Yes.
There was a sentence, it's the very first sentence, because the one before is a sentence that says, "Councillor Capalvo voted in opposition to the motion. She stated all councillors." That wasn't, I'm not the she. Sylvia is the, is the she. It looks like it's me and it wasn't, because I, the she comes directly after my statement.
Just clarify.
Just clarify that the she is-
Yeah, that makes sense.
President Thompson.
Yeah.
Because it just, it just, it looks like I said something and I said nothing.
Right, right. Yeah, you were quiet.
I know. Yeah, and so be very careful because I almost said, well, in that case, I'll give you my reasons in public. But I didn't. So you don't want to go there with me.
Was there anything else?
No.
Okay.
Approved town council meeting minutes of December 5th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, first public forum. Bye. Okay, the forum is gone. All right, the manager's gone. No, we, he, he was excused. He'll bring up these items at the next meeting. Old business. Scott?
Yes, thank you. As you know, I've been quite interested in the redistricting situation. I did come across with a rough letter that really needs to be typed up, but I want to go through it with you. But before we do, Matt Dusmaris came into town hall today and he did the snap. Now, you've got to look at the map this way. And this is like the haircut they're giving to town of Hopkinton, the redistricting. It's very obvious this is Locustville Pond, this body of water in the purple. What's happening is District 38, which is our current rep district, and this would be District 39. This is the proposal likely to be approved by the legislature that moves it into Richmond and Exeter and I remember all the towns. But I don't know if it moves Hopkins and Moore into Westerly. I had talked to Kathy Bremen today on the phone and she thought the lines were about the same. But it's tough because this whole episode is rather interesting because it's very tough to get information. I was up at the State House last Thursday. I went all over the place and the redistricting office closed. They put a card there with my number. They didn't call me and they're tough to get a hold of. And I went to the State Library and they were going to print out a map, but it would be just like from the, the website. And the other thing was, I did go to the Speaker's office and I got, somebody gave me the Chief of Staff and I went to the Minority Leader's office and the, it's the Senate office, but I didn't have it because I got a copy of the testimony I gave at the State House. This is the deal. I don't think that what we do is probably going to have that much of an impact, but I think it's important for us to take a stand. And one of the things I didn't mention in my letter that when I, when I did the testimony before the redistricting commission, one of the big emphasis was splitting villages. There was quite a group from Burrville that were there. And I didn't mention, I don't believe, splitting Hope Valley, but if you'll notice this, years ago, Hope Valley was actually, the whole section of Hope Valley was put into another rep district and the rest of the town was another. But this, this goes further than that. This actually split the Hope Valley vicinity and the northern part of Hopkinton, bit like Bobbleville and that area, which is obviously in this district, would be separate from Hope Valley. Now, I would imagine that down in this area, it's pretty close to the fire station in Hope Valley if it's not in there. I think, I think Laurie thought it would be maybe, well, the way she was thinking, it would probably be in the purple area. It's going to create a problem for Hopkins financially because it's going to cost us to have another voting district. But I would like to see the town council do a letter objecting to this change. Specifically, if you follow the criteria, as I understand it, they were supposed to stay within municipal boundaries as much as practical and also follow existing lines. And what doesn't make sense specifically is that I see no need to, to give Hopkins this haircut, as I like to call it, or think about, because the town of Charleston is presently divided and Larry Valencia represents District 39. So they needed the extra people to come within the 5 percent plus or minus for representative districts. They certainly could get it out of an existing district or an area in Charleston, which is already in District 39, without taking this northern part of Hopkinton. And they also had House Proposal A, which was not adopted by the Redistricting Commission. If you look at that map, all of the three charo towns would remain intact for the representatives. So there are other alternatives and I'm, I'm smart enough about politics, it might not happen, but I think we should take a stand. These districts are good for 10 years. And the negatives are to lose the voting strength of Hopkins because some people are implying, not all people, to like to have the legislative from their town. I'm not saying all people vote that way, but I mean, I'm sure it's definitely a consideration. Some people might argue that actually it gives Hopkins a potential to have two legislatures. That's true. But the voters in this section of Hopkinton, in a very sparse area, would, would not likely or be more difficult for somebody in this section of Hopkins to be elected to the legislature. Plus, it, it splits, you know, an area dominated by one of our major villages, Hope Valley.
So what you're asking for is a recommendation.
But, but let me go through the letter and I know it's been a long night. Let me read it to you. And, and basically what I want to do is let Sylvia write the letter, but this is to give her some ideas. The Hopkins Town Council opposes splitting the town of Hopkins into two representative districts. They are multiple-
There are.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, I did this hardly.
That's fine. That's okay.
You can, they are multiple reasons and alternatives to the map advanced by the Redistricting Commission. The redistricting process is required every 10 years. Our concerns is a plan adopted, adopted for the roundhouse representatives, and this is the one by the Redistricting Commission. The legislature still has to vote on it. This plan would divide Hopkins into two representative districts, namely District 38, which would include most of Hopkinton, and District 39 would include a small portion of the town. The town of Hopkins currently is totally included in District 38 and northern parts of Westerly. The redistricting intention has been to follow existing districts as much as possible as well as to avoid going, at least unnecessarily, over municipal lines. This suggested map is not acceptable to the town council and clearly seems avoidable. New paragraph. Following both the criteria, staying within municipal lines in existing districts, District 39 clearly seems it could meet the latter criteria by using some of its current territory in Charleston. There may be other options to fulfill criteria. In addition, Charleston is already divided in two proposed state senate districts. If District 39 covers part of Charleston, clearly those in that part of Charleston would have at least, if not more, in all cases, the same state senator in District 38. And that's the northern. Look at the map. Dennis Eldier doesn't have the holes in the proposed senate district. Charleston, is there, oh, okay. Senate districts. House Plan A, not adopted, would have kept all three charo, Charleston, Richmond, Hopkins in parentheses, the three towns in parentheses, towns intact. Then on the second page, Hopkins is also impacted by the dilution of its voting base as a town will not be voting as a whole for a single state representative and the cost of setting up a new district as well as finding an appropriate polling place. In closing, the Hopkins Town Council opposes the House plan recommended by the Redistricting Commission and urges alternatives be done that will address our concerns. In the letter, to be sent to the Governor, the Senate President, and Majority, Minority Leaders of the Senate, House Speaker, Majority Minority Leader of the Roundhouse, Senator Ma, and Senator Ma was on the Redistricting Commission, Representative Kennedy, Representative Valencia, Representative Walsh, as well as the co-chairs of the Redistricting Commission, and also the Richmond, Charleston, and Westerly Town Councils. But I would, I'd like to make a motion that the council president be authorized to-
Can we just consult before we have a motion?
Okay.
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Barbara.
I think the idea is a good idea, Scott, and I think you wrote the letter pretty well. I would add a phrase on the second page, Lisa, and the cost of setting up a new district as well as finding an appropriate polling location is very difficult. Would be nice. I mean, we need to finish the sentence.
Well, we can, you know, add it.
I know, but it, it needs to be completed. It's very difficult and expensive. Just a minute. But I think that, I think that overall, the letter is pretty clear and it's pretty simple. I don't think that it's a complex letter. I think it's easy to read. And I, I mean, when it's typed, it'll be easy to read. But I, I think it says what Scott is recommending pretty clearly without being overly verbose. So I, I like it. I like what you've done. I think that's probably something we should address because it will be an incredibly expensive and difficult process if we have to set up a third, fourth polling location.
I've got one suggestion. See how you all feel about it. The part in the letter where it refers to Charleston and that that's an option and you could have done something, I, I don't, I feel like we'd be getting into somebody else's business. So I don't want to start an argument with them.
Delete that.
So if we could just not talk about Charleston, but say there were, there are other options, something, something to that effect without getting into what you could do to another town. That's all.
The reason I did that is when you, when you make a statement, people are going to say, well, where is, what do you propose? And the reason I did that is to be specific because everybody accuses a politician of not being specific. But if you, if it makes you feel better, there are other-
We could put something in there.
You can say there are other options to fulfill the requirements of not going over municipal lines and following current legislative districts. If you want to put that in and eliminate Charleston, that would do the job because if they look logically in that whole region, if they're going to look for more territory, they'd go to Charleston, say, part of Charleston's in the 38, I mean, 39th district now, logically, if they look at a map. If you want to do that, I don't have a problem. I'm just delighted the council is seriously entertaining supporting me on this because I think we should, we should take a stand. I mean, but they didn't even follow-
And I had a question for you too, and I know how hard you tried to get information. The question I would have is, I couldn't believe that he was unable, even after going there, he's not able to answer a question. A question that he couldn't find, he couldn't find the details, and that was, if you look at the map and, because Scott had made a statement to me about diluting Hopkinton's power, how many people are in, if this goes in, how many are voters in Hopkinton? How many are voters in Westerly? And does it, does this plan now give Westerly more voters than Hopkinton had before? I just wondered how that, how that, and we don't have the information. And he can't, he can't get it.
Well, Kathy Bremen, I talked to her today and she was going to like email me, but I didn't see the email in my email. I went and checked it in the library. But logically, even if, and she thought the lines would be the same in Westerly, but logically it would strengthen Westerly because just cutting off the northern part of Hopkinton. Now, people, people vote for different reasons. Political population, political scientists, political professionals, though that's the biggest determinant of how people vote, but there are other things, hometown advantage and a lot of other people, people vote for different reasons. But you're, what you're doing is, in the Westerly Charahoe area, and if the criteria is to stay within municipal lines, and if you can't do that, follow existing districts.
Right.
The town of Charleston is split right now.
I think you made that point.
Right. You made that point, and it's also very important for us, as far as I'm concerned. It has to do with my town and it's expensive and it's difficult because we don't have polling places. We don't have places that we can do this. They're asking a rural town to suddenly set up a polling place in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, I didn't really have a chance when I was at the State House. I went to some place.
I mean, I think that's far more important for me financially. Fiscally is what we're responsible for as a town council.
Probably Big Ten.
Yeah, it's just fiduciary responsibility. We just can't do it.
Well, Tom Evans, who came, used to live in Ashway, he was going to write me off a copy, but it was like just from the computer, so it wouldn't have made any sense. And I could have probably called Anzavino, but I'm a little disappointed that when you make a phone call, you can't, didn't even have a recording machine. But I mean, I gave it the old college try. But I do appreciate the council's supporting of mine because this is something we're going to have to live with.
Scott, I just had a quick question too. Is there anything positive with this?
I think-
I mean, I know there's negatives. I mean, is the diluting of the voting power-
We don't know if it's diluted.
Well, it would be.
Well, it could be. If there's, if the population on the Westerly side is more, we don't know.
And then the more expensive to have a fourth polling place. But is there anything positive? There's got to be, why would they redo this?
They're doing it for numbers.
For numbers.
For numbers.
It's all numbers.
It's people.
Well, politics usually enters in.
Yeah. It started up north. That's where it's-
He's right.
But there's nothing positive, nothing positive?
I don't know.
Well, I think, I think what's positive for Hopkinton is that we keep the town intact is the positive thing for this town, which hopefully the council would do. The positive thing in our area outside of Hopkin is we keep the lines as much as current without making changes. And obviously, you're going to make some changes. But very clearly, it seems that if you believe all the variations, that this is doable. And I mean, they do have a number of voting districts in Charleston and I'm sure they could come up and stay within the 5 percent plus the median with Mr. Valencia's district because it does cover. Look at the current district, 39, Charleston is split right now.
Can we just get this typed?
Okay, so we'll get this letter done.
And look at it next council meeting?
I don't think, I don't think we have the luxury of doing that.
Well, if we can get this letter out, we just leave off the part about Charleston and basically follow his letter.
When's the vote, Scott?
I'm not sure. I don't know if it was intended.
It's going to be February.
Oh, February. The vote?
From the legislature?
Yeah.
Okay, I will-
According to Brian.
Okay, so if you want, you can postpone the letter to the next council meeting.
But the thing is, and if I can say this, because I was talking to Cynthia the other day, that I think Brian had told her, I shared a couple of emails with Brian and I haven't been in contact with him. I did get a copy and I appreciate you telling that because you told me something I didn't know, that you put this on the next agenda and you work on the letter and-
We just have to be able to read it.
Yeah, get it finalized. It's kind of not very legible.
All right, yeah, we'll do that. And-
We'll review it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I appreciate that because-
The other thing, and I want to ask before we leave the topic, is what, you mentioned the criteria. Where is the criteria? Where, is that, oh.
I can tell you that too.
Good.
According to Kennedy, again, two criteria, well, two deciding factors. One is that they wanted the average voting district to be approximately 14,000 people and Hopkinton's population's been growing and it was over 15,000. So they wanted to equalize that.
Our population isn't 15,000.
Well, the district, he said-
Oh, okay, so they don't want to, okay.
And the second, the real clincher was they started doing the redrawn districts from East Bay to West. He said if they'd started in the West, Hopkin probably would have been left intact. But the way it ended up, it pushed everything-
Yeah, all the numbers filter down to us.
Until Hopkin was caught in the squeeze. So one's word, that's where-
Make up a shortfall.
But where is that criteria? Is that a law or, I mean, who, where did this criteria, I'm wondering what it is. Is it just a legislative policy?
He said he goes to Mr. Uche, who was the chair of the redistricting committee or commission, I believe, and that's the explanation he pursued.
I don't believe though, for the record, that he testified either. I believe he might have-
He didn't say he did. He just went to talk to him after.
But the thing is that when I was at the State House to testify that night, Brian would, I said hello to him or something, but he wasn't in the room. But the thing is that even if you, I don't accept that statement and the reason I don't accept it is the fact that what, whether, where you start doesn't mean that you can't make adjustments to come up with that level if there, you can still move the District 39 partly into Charleston if you're wanting to, because you're dealing with a town of a little over 8,000.
Right.
So that's still, I don't accept that explanation.
Thanks for your work, Scott.
All right. All right, well, this will be at the next council meeting.
It's actually nicely done, not verbose at all.
Yes, appreciate your doing this.
Not verbose at all.
I'm glad I didn't have her as a teacher.
All right, next up, new business, which is going to be tabled to the next council meeting. Boards and commissions.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint to the planning board Joseph Escher.
The resignation?
Oh. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept Mr. Vecchio's resignation from the Charahoe School Committee with regret and authorize advertisement for the vacancy. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that. I did talk to Richard on the way here just to see if anything changed and, you know, because I know, and he got into the numbers with the Charahoe budget unlike anyone. And I was really trying to appeal to him from the town's perspective to please try and reconsider because, quite honestly, I don't know if anybody's going to get into the numbers like this guy did against, with the contracts, the support staff contracts and he, he-
Everybody has called him.
Oh, yeah. I've called him too.
And I live next door to him, but I tried again to have him, because I said, well, have the vote tonight. Would you please reconsider and behalf of the town, I'm asking you, please? And he said, well, I've given it a lot of thought and I, I'm going to stand with my resignation, so.
Yeah, he makes up his mind.
Yeah, oh, yeah, he does. You don't have to tell him.
I also spoke to him and after listening to him, I didn't even decide to try to push him. I knew where he was coming from. I understood his issues and I just-
I just think the town's, the town's going to lose a good person.
Even without, without them.
I'd like to comment that I haven't talked to Mr. Vecchio, but I have a higher guard. And the sad part about Mr. Vecchio is the fact that we have three people on the school committee, Georgia Yur, Deborah Connie, and Mr. Vecchio are more or less the Mavericks, if you follow the school committee, and they at least question things. And I think, we're going to, we're probably going to taste that beyond this meeting. We're going to see how the school committee handles the councils and their input and their perspective. But Richard Vecchio was his own man.
He was.
And he's going to be missed. But I think that apparently he spends a lot of time at work. I know he works for FedEx. I do see him on his job and, but I hope that we have a quality person and a person that's going to at least question things and, but-
All right, I forgot. Did you make a motion to accept it?
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay. There was a second. Okay. The advertisement for the vacancy, do we want to do the same, pretty much follow what Richmond had done and we advertise for the position and we can talk about where we're going to advertise, for instance, town websites, obviously. But I don't know if you want anything in the newspaper. And my point that I was going to make though is whether or not you wanted to also, when you list the requirements that we'll, if you're going to list requirements that we're looking for, a person who is X, Y, and Z. But do we want to also ask that they submit to a background check like Richmond did? Have we ever done that before?
Do they do that for candidates?
They did that for the school committee, yeah. That they did, I'm not, I'm just, I want to throw it out there.
I had one individual call me for an application and I submitted an application, our regalia board of commissioners, application form with the background check.
Oh, okay. So that's standard, okay.
Yeah, and what, I mean, if we want though, we can ask specifically for certain things rather than just get a, fill out a form saying, I volunteer. I'd like to, I'd like to see people, for instance, answer some questions. Why do they want to be on the school committee? I mean, should they have an-
Don't we interview them anyway?
You want to leave it for that? You don't want a resume or anything?
You know, I, you know-
I mean, I just want to know.
Yes, I think that would be wise. I mean, I think if you're applying for a position, you should-
I mean, it's a little more than just, it's not, I'm not, want to put down boards and commissions, but the point is this is an elected position and it just seems like maybe we want to treat it a little differently.
It's an elected position for one, to fill one year.
Well, it is one year.
Yeah, it's still an elected position.
Technically, it's a coaching position, isn't it? It's not, if you're coaching them.
Correct. Right. So, I don't know. Well, what do you want to do?
Well, first of all, this is a political office. The office of school committee is a political office. It's not a professional office like being superintendent. And I think all five of us will probably look for different things. It's not like applying for a principal's job. If somebody wants, I think people should be free to submit any type of information they want because what I look for, and I'm going to be looking for somebody who is objective, that's going to, can be able to balance the concerns of the taxpayers with-
Well, is there anything you would like to put on this, when we advertise for the, in whatever way we advertise, is there anything specifically you want to put down that we're looking for? Any particular skills? Go ahead, Tom.
I personally would just leave it to us interviewing because I'd like to see their quick response.
Okay.
Not something that sat down and-
Scripted?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Good word. And that was the only thing I thought of.
All right, that's fine.
I'd actually like a resume and a statement of intent. What are they trying to accomplish? And a resume is just, who are you? Where did you come from? And what is your background so that we can, may not ask the right question and we may have information, they may have information we really like. But I, I mean, I don't think people should just put their name in. I mean, I think they should give us a, a letter of intent, what they mean to do in that position.
What did Richmond ask for?
And a resume. I don't care. I don't, I just remembered that they, they wanted to make it clear that there was a background check. Frank, you want, you want to weigh in?
Well, there's good points on both. I kind of agree with Tom a little bit about the impromptu stuff, which I like in the interview process. Letter intent is great too. I don't think, you know, necessarily we have to say you have to have a resume because some folks might not have one.
Well, I meant a resume, just how long have you lived here? Have you lived elsewhere? Have you done particular work? I mean, what have you done? I mean-
Yeah, but that, if you get resumes, you're not going to get that on a resume.
Right.
You know, those kinds of things.
It's going to stick to jobs and experience, not-
But, but a homemaker can send me a resume to say, this is what I have done for the last 40 years. I think that's a resume, does not have to have concur-.
Okay, well, let's just move things along. So you've made, we've, I haven't heard from you. How would you like to proceed? Do you want it more formal or informal?
I like to do basically informal.
Okay.
People want to submit a resume, fine, but I don't think it should be required. But I will state is, for, you know, some of these here, I, I believe I'm going to, I will ask if any member of their immediate family is employed at Charahoe. I think that's an important issue. As you know, Mr. Vecchio's letter-
I think we're, go ahead, Scott.
No, I mean, okay, I, I-
We're talking about advertising for the position.
Yeah, well, it's basically what I wanted to cut you off and say, we're talking about the advertisement.
Okay, basically, a statement of interest, resumes can be included but not required, or something like that, because I, if people feel-
That's fine.
If some people don't have a resume, they might say, I'm not going to be-
All right, well, I just wanted to get a feeling for what everybody wanted and basically people want to leave it to the interview, but some statement of a letter of intent or why are you interested in the position or something to that effect, but nothing formal. And the formal will come more in the, when we do the interview. Okay, all right.
And when are we looking to fill it, I guess? I have no idea.
Oh, yeah, deadlines. I guess, all right, we're going to put this on the webpage. There'll be an article in the Wesley Sun, I suppose, about, well, maybe, I mean, it's already been in the paper that he submitted a resignation. Is there any other way that we want to reach people?
And I think it should be approximately March. I mean, it can't be in two weeks. No, it's not going to be that quick. So, and February is a short month, so, and we're already in the budget cycle for school, budget cycle for us.
Well, so, you know, I'd say March.
March? An interview in March?
No, no, no. We make decisions in March.
I think sooner rather than later.
No, I meant to make decisions in March. Okay, I go for as soon as possible, but without a rush. I mean, so by the March meeting, we've made our decision. So, I mean, excuse me, by February, we've made our decision. So we, I mean, let's look at the calendar. Here we are in the third. Yeah, we give them a deadline of, they could pick something out of the air. Our next council meeting is the 17th? Yes, okay.
So how about the 20th?
So what are we doing on the 17th? Anything, any hearings?
Commercial hall license.
So we could, we could designate the 17th for an interview.
Or what about the 24th? If we, if we get some applications or?
I mean, give ourselves enough time to get applications. Richmond had a very short time window and they got like one person or two people. I mean, I was thinking if we get to the 24th, at least maybe people can think about it, consider it and bring it forward.
Okay, if you go to the 24th and you don't have your council meeting until February 6th and it's almost a month away. But we could do a special meeting.
All right, let's make a decision here. What would you like to do? What would you like to do?
ASAP.
Okay, so, does the seventeenth sound good for an interview?
They won't know it. They won't be useful at all.
So what would be, my question would be, what would be your deadline for people to respond?
Two weeks.
That's why I said the twenty-fourth.
Am I putting it in the newspaper?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You mentioned the website.
Let's put it in the newspaper.
I figure most job applications and stuff are two weeks.
We do if we get somebody that's, we're not satisfied with.
Well, I'm just looking for a little direction here. We're trying to do it as, well, some of us are trying to move it along.
I mean, I don't have a crowd waiting until February because.
I'd say by twenty-fourth. I mean, it gives them two full weeks, two full weeks plus, well, a half, two and a half week.
Okay, we only have a, we have a January seventeenth meeting, and then we don't have one for three weeks. But we can do a special meeting.
Yeah, but the thing is, the school committee meets the second or two.
What would you like to do? Yes?
On your next agenda, perhaps you might have the scheduling of workshops for your, for your budget workshop. So you'll have many meetings coming up. I don't know if you.
Well, that makes sense, too. You'll have lots of workshops, yeah.
So you could technically put something in.
Prior to.
The first meeting in February, you think is too late? Because the school, the school committee has their first February meeting the second Tuesday.
Well, the bottom line is, has any of us, any of us gotten any calls on this, like, oh gee, you know, I think this is wonderful, I'm looking to go on the school committee?
No, I know there's one person I want to call.
You can't even, yeah, it's hard to find people, so.
Yeah, it's probably one or two.
The bottom line is.
Ran for school committee.
A what?
He ran for school committee.
Well, whatever. All right, yeah, it's exactly, whatever.
So if I'm able to get this to the newspaper, say for Thursday or fifth, no, today's Tuesday, maybe for Friday, the sixth, given two weeks, that brings it to the twentieth, which is a Friday.
Right. And you've got a deadline of the twentieth, and I guess we'll just see what comes in. I mean, just, we're not going to have a council meeting until the seventh, probably.
But could, could we interview on the twenty-fourth? If that's the case, if we have to give them two weeks, that's the twentieth, and then we'd have to.
Twentieth is just then the weekend, and anybody who has, you know, if the deadline's the twentieth, it means they could mail it on the twentieth, which means we won't get it till Monday or Tuesday anyway. Because the deadline doesn't mean it's in our hand, it means it's in the postage stamped twentieth.
Yeah, well, if someone's interested, they're not going to wait till the last minute.
Well, I'd prefer to, quite frankly, I'd prefer to see a quicker deadline and, and get right into it. There's people out there, you know, giving them more time isn't going to, isn't going to matter. I'd like to see us set up an interview for the seventeenth.
And you've already got one application already?
No.
Oh, you got it?
I sent one out.
Oh, you sent one out, okay, so.
But even if we have a deadline of the twenty-fourth, can't we still have interviews on the seventeenth if someone comes in early?
We could have a deadline of January thirteenth. All right, we've got some possibilities.
One week.
I need people to weigh in on whether you want a deadline of the thirteenth, the twentieth, the twenty-seventh of January, twenty-fourth.
What's, what's the date she can get in for the sixth?
Yes.
Right, that's the twentieth.
Twentieth, two weeks.
I say the twentieth. I don't think they're going to wait till the last minute.
All right, we don't need to discuss it, I just need to know what the consensus is. Okay, so we're going to have a deadline of the twentieth for the ad, for the submission of, of an application. Correct?